Good afternoon. Thank you, Pitt County residents, for your present today. Welcome in the audience and welcome out home. This is the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. We'll come to order. Invocation by Commissioner Anne Florida-Huggins. And we will have a pledge of allegiance from our school person. You can come in order in that same order, and we get their agenda. We'll do their agenda first.
The roll call.
Roll call. I'm ready to start. Roll call from the Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Now we're ready. Please stand. Commissioner Huggins?
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We ask your blessings and your guidance for all of our decisions, that they will be in the best interest of citizens of Pitt County, your people. These are all blessings we ask in Jesus's name to say, amen.
Ms. Come to the podium. Introduce yourself.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kimora Ula, and I am a 2023 graduate of J. H. Rose High School. While a student at Rose, I participated in clubs and organizations such as Future Business Leaders of America, Student Government Association. I was the president of our National English Honor Society, and I participated in other honor societies. My post-secondary plans are to attend East Carolina University's Honors College to major in industrial engineering technology. Thank you for having me this evening, and at this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. All right, agenda motion.
Motion to approve.
Uh, we...
Ready to revise.
Commissioner McLahorn, are you motioning to approve the revised agenda?
Yes, I am.
Second.
Let's vote, please. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Madam County Manager, Janice Gallagher.
For public addresses to the board, you have two people signed up to speak. If the attorney will read the statement as Robert Cherry comes forward.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A total of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
Good evening. I'm Robert Cherry. Address 3412 Roundling Bingham Road, Winneville, North Carolina. Madam Chair, Commissioners, County Manager, and staff, I am Robert Cherry, member of the Board of Directors at Community Crossroads Center. I'm here tonight along with fellow members of the board, volunteers and staff to ask for your support. I ask that my fellow board members, previous board members, and supporters of the center please stand at this time. Thank you. I'm here tonight along with these board members to ask for your support of Community Crossroads Center, which has been in operation continuously for 35 years and has expanded its capacity and services during this time. To just give you a snapshot of one year of the 35 years, over the past year, we have provided housing for 114 families. This includes assisting 66 families consisting of a total of 153 minor children and 77 adults through the Temporary Aid for Needy Families program provided through Pitt County Social Services. We provided temporary housing and additional 48 families that found themselves homeless. This included 95 minors and 57 adults for a total of 153 parents and children that were provided non-congrat accommodations throughout our hotel program through the Community Development Block grant received from the city of Greenville while stable housing options were pursued. We provided nearly 55,000 meals for residents of the shelter at a conservative cost of approximately $140,000, approximately $5,000 over 35 years. We provided congregant housing for 46 men and women in dorms. These services included nighttime supervision provided by five full-time staff members. We've been sustained through the years by strong community support. Over 80% of our center's support is from operating budget that comes from private groups, churches, and businesses, and community-minded individuals. 20% comes from small government grants. While these services provided are necessary and life-sustaining, the current physical footprint of the center limits our ability to provide other important services and resources, such as family rooms for parents with children, minor children, respite care for fragile residents of the shelter, services for children including housing and after-school care, job counseling, and medical care. With the support of the county, the city, and private sector, we are poised to resume and expand our services provided by the shelter so that we are able to not only offer a clean bed and warm meal, but perhaps more importantly, offer resources to restore self-efficacy and confidence so our residents can leave the shelter prepared to lead productive lives, having gained job skills, parenting skills, financial management and skills, and other education. We've been diligently working to design cost-effective, efficient structure to provide space for these services, care for families, counseling and educational resources, respite care and medical services. We are prepared to launch a capital campaign and have been working with private donors poised to match funding we hope to secure through the county and city budget allocation. We are prepared to break ground in the near future and ask for your support tonight to be the cornerstone and champions for this important initiative that would undoubtedly serve deserving residents of this county and the Community Crossroads Center. Thank you for your support.
Thank you so much.
We only have one other person signed up to speak, Mrs. Edna Atkinson.
Good evening.
Pull it down a little bit, because we barely heard that "good evening." I guess my ear...
Good evening.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, Board of Commission, already done sharing my name with you. It's good to be before you today. Happy Earth Day. And I just, I just want to emphasize on this, this fish that Martin Luther King stated in his battle on the land that God gifted him. He just, he just said, "For Martha, you will not come, you will not come sacrificed, but you will, you will not, you will not come sacrificed. You, you, and you will not come on wings of eagle, but you will come sacrificed in hardship." And he did. He came on wing, not on wing of eagle, but sacrifice and hardship on ice. He had to break the ice for us. He had to break the ice for, and it was tough. It was rough in the battle. So many died out before him, but God saw us through. Through it all, God saw us through. And I just want to lift up, I just want to lift up Judge David Bewee. His commitment to the state rights. His commitment to the federal government. The federal government. And, uh, all through, all through. All through, he did. The federal government. All through. From outlawing, from outlawing. From outlawing. He, he brought it through. The allies. The allies. And all through, the allies. All through, the allies. They, they came through prostitution. They came through prostitution. And this was uplifted back in 1909, which I believe none of us was born at that time. It is a clear matter. It is a clear matter. Although Constitution gave Congress more power over the ally with authority, with authority.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have signed up for public addresses to the board.
Next item on the agenda, please.
If we'll go down front for presentation of Employee of the Month, Hannah Hines will come forward.
Thank you. And you can stand right on the blacktop for the picture. Okay. One of the favorite things I get to do each month is recognize our Employee of the Month. The Employee of the Month program began on March 6th of last year, and its purpose is to create a platform for employees to celebrate one another by recognizing extraordinary efforts of fellow employees in serving the citizens of Pitt County through their hard work, dedication, and contributions in fulfilling Pitt County's mission to enhance the health, safety, and well-being of our community by advocating for and providing quality services in a friendly and cost-effective manner, and encouraging and recognizing employees who embrace Pitt County's vision to be a leader in the state and best in the east. This month's Employee of the Month is Hannah Hines with Management Information Systems. Hannah was selected for her leadership and commitment to providing Pitt County residents, contractors, and developers with technological advances. Her nominator said Hannah has provided direction and leadership for the current project by Tyler Technologies and implementation of EnerGov. That's our new online permitting system that will cross multiple county departments. It says, "As project lead, she has worked diligently to provide guidance for multiple departments within the county." Hannah has served as Pitt County, served with Pitt County since 2016 as a systems analyst in the Enterprise Applications Division of Management Information Systems. Each month, we ask our Employee of the Month to share a favorite quote, and Hannah's quote this month is one of my favorites. It says, quote, "If the plan doesn't work, change the plan, but never lose sight of the goal." And so with that, we offer congratulations to Hannah Hines with a certificate of recognition that reads Employee of the Month, June 2023, presented to Hannah Hines, MIS, in recognition of your dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County government and the citizens we serve, along with a $100 check.
Thank you so much for your service. There you go. Would you like to have some comments?
You don't have any.
No comments? Okay, let's get a picture.
Well, I will say, if you like that quote, it was inspired from the Sesame Street song that my toddler listens to.
Okay, let's get this picture right here.
Thank you so much.
Public hearings. Mr. Rose.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have two public hearings scheduled tonight. I'll get it kicked off with the first one. It is for our subdivision ordinance amendments. We've had a lot of debate and discussion, and even a judge's ruling that kind of brought us to this point of convening a group to review some of the processes and procedures and requirements within our subdivision ordinance. So after some of that debate and discussion and the judge's ruling, our planning board did decide to convene a subcommittee out of its group, as well as bringing on a couple of developers and a professional engineer that are very accustomed with our subdivision regulations to look at the process and also gather some additional information. So this group met three times over a three-month period of time. Lot of information was shared. Of course, when we're dealing with subdivision activity, we have to look at soil types. In the unincorporated part of the county, we're dealing with septic systems. And a lot of times, the development patterns and the sizes of lots and other things are dictated by the types of soils, especially those that are better suited for septic systems. We also did a lot of review of other best practices around the state as far as how other organizations, other local governments review plans and the information that's accounted for on those plans. So with all of that, and looking more closely, getting information from our environmental health staff, planning, legal, and some other individuals, we did have the set of amendments that were included in your package tonight, as well as some other administrative changes. So first up is the process. We're now recommending, this group recommended, the planning board unanimously recommended that major subdivision plans forego any approval by the planning board. And why is that? This is an administrative decision. If these plans, so says the judge, so says our state statutes, if the plan meets the requirements, that plan is to be approved. So there's really no need for another review by our planning board. Our technical review committee provides a recommendation to our planning board. That group is well-suited to handle that administrative action. I'll say a side benefit of this is this also streamlines the review process. It shortens the process by about a week. So in the development community, that's also very helpful. There were some other administrative items, extension requests and appeals. Those should go to the Board of Adjustment, so we made those changes as well. There is one difference of opinion between staff and the planning board as far as this process, and that is as to whether adjacent property owners should be notified about a new subdivision coming through. We are very keen in notifying folks for zoning and other legislative-type hearings. But as far as administrative action, staff contends it pretty much gives a false impression to folks that are notified that those individuals can come out and change the process. Again, if this plan meets all the requirements, it should be required, it should be approved and moved forward. So staff is recommending removal. We currently notify people of adjacent properties that are being developed for subdivision activity. Staff is recommending to discontinue that. The planning board recommends for it to move forward. All the other amendments are agreed upon between staff and the planning board. So with that, you have two options tonight. From our standpoint, amend and review, amend the review and approval process, time extensions and appeals for subdivisions, and continue the notification. That's the planning board's recommendation. Planning staff says the same, except remove the notification of the adjacent property owners. So, Madam Chair, I'll leave you for that deliberation and a public hearing.
We, I declare the public hearing over.
There's no one signed up to speak?
All right. Anyone from the audience interested? Do you have times publicized? I declare the public hearing closed. Discussion by the board. Yes, Commissioner Coulson.
James, you know my, my position on some of these, shall we call it, creative lots, where they will have homes that will be, you know, along a road, and then because there's no room for a repair field adjacent to that house or the lines that are there, they'll go anywhere from 350 to 600 feet zigzag back into the back corner. None of this speaks to that.
And we've already made those amendments. So we're there, we have addressed some of those...
So how far can they go back with these creative? See, I'm not sure I've seen that.
It's not how far they can go back, it's the configuration of the parcel. So previously, they could reduce that panhandle, dogleg, whatever you want to call it, down to 10 feet. Now it's a requirement, it's got to be a minimum of 40 feet
But I knew that.
all the way back. So still could be creatively configured, but there's also some other ways that we've allowed these utility lots to be created where there is not an easement area connecting the lot to the utility lot.
Okay, so in light of the, of these amendments here, or this entire thing, subdivision ordinance, those things will still be allowed. And it worries me that people will not know to ask, information will not be volunteered to them, that if they have to go into a repair field, it could cost them tens of thousands of dollars to get back there. And so the judge apparently saying that it's, if that's legal, and this is, you're saying that's legal. Therefore, a subdivision with such ridiculous layout, they must be approved because they fall within the parameters of what's allowed.
And remember, those regulations are also state-dictated as far as the suitability of the soils and some of the engineering options that are allowed now. So yes, if that's approved based off our regulations, in turn, the review process, if everything else is in concurrence with our regulations, the plan itself should be approved.
And so therefore, those lots that are over there, I'll call it, adjacent to 903, and also the bypass, they're going to go through. People are going to get into those things. And at some point, they're going to, they're going to wish that they knew. They're going to wish they knew. So why don't we, as a county, have somebody go to every closing, I know I'm being absurd here, but go to every closing and tell people, hey, look, we had to pass these things, we had to do this, but you better beware. You better realize what you're buying when you buy this property. Because there's not going to be a line running back to the, to the repair field 600 feet away. And that repair, the repair field might have four and five and six and seven other people in that area that are using the soil in the repair area. I just find this troubling, very troubling. And I know you can't do a thing about it, and it's a shame.
Commissioner Coulson, are you?
I'm finished.
Commissioner Ahnannoli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Rose, I wanted to maybe drill down a little bit. On the face of it, I'm not opposed to, you know, approving this, these amendments. But I want to get on the disagreement about notice. And just as, as, you know, from, from an objective layperson's perspective, right? And I know you said that it seems that since it is kind of a rubber-stamp process, if, if all the boxes are checked, the planning board approves that, taking the planning board out of it, right? We're removing, removing that so that there's a step in the process that efficiency, you know, dictates. And, and, and the courts have dictated that, you know, we really don't need that step. That makes sense. But from a public's perspective, anytime there's development on the land, there, there's always a question about what's the problem with notice, right? And I wonder if there was conversation with the planning board. Was there some disagreement amongst the committee that was reviewing this, whether or not, or was it pretty unanimous with the planning board that, hey, maybe we better leave that notice there? Even though it may be just notice without recourse, so to speak? Because, you know, as you say, false impression, doesn't matter the opposition that you have to it. We're going to notice you about it, but you still, you know, I wonder if it's not better to notice anyway? And because sometimes you need to know you're going to have heartburn over it, right? Just, just, just in light of an effort to be as transparent as possible.
And I don't necessarily disagree with that. I will tell you, yes, there's been a lot of debate and discussion about this notification process. It's been good and, good and bad examples of the notification and how it has, I'll say, stirred or steered the planning board in making certain actions at the meeting. So in turn, yes, there's been a lot of debate about it. The planning board, I will tell you, was unanimous in their recommendation to keep this.
Okay.
Finish.
Yes.
Commissioner McLahorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My comment is similar to Commissioner Ahnannoli. I think transparency means a lot. And the planning board recommended to continue that transparency with notifying the adjacent property owners. So, you know, I'm, for one, would like to see that remain. I'm not in favor of changing that as the staff recommend. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on this, on the board?
I'll make a motion if we're ready for it.
Yes, we are.
I would like to make a motion to approve the ordinances, but with the planning board's recommendation to continue to note, notify adjacent property owners.
Excuse me, Commissioner Coulson.
Second.
It has been motioned by Commissioner White and second by Commissioner Coulson that we include the notice. All in favor, but in non-voting. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Rose.
Thank you. There is one rezoning request that was before you as a public hearing. Also, you, I believe in front of you tonight, have the withdrawal request from Mr. George Shaver concerning this rezoning request. Staff does recommend that you take action to acknowledge this withdrawal. And in turn, if it's submitted again or there's any indication of changes on this land use, it will require a new submittal for zoning amendment.
Madam Chairwoman, you do not have the actual withdrawal in front of you this evening, but it's been received by the office and just was not placed at your settings. But we have that and can include it within your minutes for this meeting.
Any objections by the board? Thank you.
Did you want a motion to accept the withdrawal?
I would prefer a motion, yes.
Move to accept the...
Motion by Commissioner Ahnannoli, and it was seconded by... Who seconded that motion?
Mr. McLahorn.
Commissioner McLahorn, that we do as stated. Remove.
Thank you.
And Madam Chairwoman, you had one person signed up for, to speak at that public hearing, which we will not now get to, but just wanted to acknowledge that Douglas Dietrich, that there would not be a hearing on this matter because it was withdrawn.
Are you here, Mr. Dietrich? Oh, he, there he is. You understand the ruling of the board. Thank you. Next item.
Your item is a report. You have a Juvenile Crime Prevention Council report, Marlo Blake. This report was requested by the chairwoman to get information about services in Pitt County by JCPC. Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, Madam Chairman did request. And my name is Marlo Blake, and I am the vice chair of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council here in Pitt County. I'm also an employee of the Department of Public Safety, Division of Juvenile Justice. For 25 years as juvenile court counselor, I'm currently one of the supervisors... For twenty-five years as juvenile court counselor, I'm currently one of the supervisors. So I supervise staff that supervise juveniles that are on probation in our county, including Craven, Carteret, and Pamlico Counties. So, um, speaking specifically for the Pitt County JCPC, we meet every fourth Monday of the end of the month. I know that there was some information, or you wanted some information on numbers specifically. And the numbers are tallied kind of a year behind, so the physical year for last year, I can speak that for the county, it looks like there's, the total youth ages ten to seventeen is seventeen thousand three hundred and sixty-five was reported for the county. We received four hundred and twenty youth in the county for, at intake. We diverted a hundred and sixty-nine children from the court system, which means they were, when complaints come in our office, every child does not go to juvenile court just because they come to our office. We make that decision as to, statutorily, based on what they're charged with, whether they should be referred to juvenile court or not for a judge's review. And some cases are diverted from court, and we supervise them within our office. And then some cases are closed by our office. We see every child that a complaint is filed on, but some do not need court intervention. So we diverted a hundred and sixty-nine of the four hundred and twenty children, and a hundred and sixteen of those children were also approved for court. We had ninety-six juveniles that were adjudicated in juvenile court. We had eighty-three at that time on supervised probation. We had seventy-three detention admissions for last physical year, eight YDC commitments, which YDC commitment is our long-term facility. They say six months up to their eighteenth birthday, but most stay around a year, year and a half. And then we have, at the time, had twelve on post-lease supervision, which is juveniles that have been to our long-term facility, and then we are also supervising them in the county for the next year, ninety days up to a year. So our Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have programs throughout the county, such as the Pitt County Teen Court Program. We have, which is a huge program that was started many years ago that helps with our diversion process. And so is mainly utilized for SROs or developed for SROs in the school system so that they don't have to come through the court system. And so Pitt County Teen Court is a huge, huge part of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council monies that they get each year. And we also, kids that are referred to our court can also be diverted to the Pitt County Teen Court Program also if it's misdemeanor offenses. We also have a juvenile restitution program so that victims can be compensated up to a certain amount for diverted kids and for kids that have gone to juvenile court. We also have a therapeutic foster program, care program, that we utilize through the Methodist Home for Children for children that need a ninety-day out-of-home placement, temporary placement. It's not involving the Department of Social Services, not taking children from families. It's a temporary placement to give kind of a respite for families that are having issues with children in their home. We also have a program called Family Preservation through the Methodist Home for Children that works as an in-home type counseling program that works with communication skills, skill building, that kind of thing, with children and their parents. And we also have a vocational component that was added to that because in December of two thousand nineteen, the state of North Carolina was one of the last states to raise the age in North Carolina for delinquent youth from fifteen to seventeen. So now we get a much more abundance of sixteen and seventeen-year-olds through our system, and which has really changed the development of our system, to be honest. And so we do work with children between ten and up to eighteen years old now, and some are actually nineteen. They may go in, that stay in our facilities. And so the family preservation programs, their vocational program is a huge component for some of the sixteen and seventeen-year-old youth because they can now work, some are not in school. And so we try to help them get employment, gain employment to be productive citizens. And then we also have a program through Youth Villages where they complete comprehensive clinical assessments because in adjudicated youth, or youth that has any type of mental health issues that we need to get clinical assessments, we have that ability to go straight to an assessor in a very short period of time because within the courts, it has to be in a short period of time in order, once adjudication happens, we have to get them clinical assessments to make sure that the needs are met for the youth in the, in the county. And so these programs that are funded through Juvenile Crime Prevention Council are huge in this county and are a huge part of our county. And so within our office, we utilize all of those programs. But those programs, some, like I said, the Teen Court, that can be accessed by school resource officers and law enforcement if need be because that's a program that's designed not just for court services. So, does anyone have any questions specifically about any programs or any services that the JCPC offers?
Madam Chair.
Uh, Commissioner McLahorn?
I just want to thank you, Marlo, for your service. Marlo serves as the Assistant Director, Chief of this juvenile service. But James Tripp, of course, he serves as the Chairperson. And I've been serving on this board for about fifteen, sixteen years. And this is one of the most important, I think. It's not the, uh, the important board that the county offers. Working with our youth and juvenile is very, very dear to my heart and see how we, as a county, reached out, to reach out to our youth and provide such an outstanding program. And I just want to say again, I thank you for your service, thank you for the good job that you, you are doing for, for our youth of Pitt County.
Well, thank you very much. Some days it's very rewarding, some days it's very challenging. So, but thank you.
Any other questions by the board?
No other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item. Mr. Hill, welcome to the podium.
Good afternoon. Chairwoman Perkins-Williams, Commissioners, and Manager Gallagher. Tonight I bring to you the May twenty, May twenty-two-three collection report. The Pitt County Fiscal Year to Date, July first, two thousand twenty-two through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, combined collection rate for real and personal property is ninety-nine point two-seven percent. The combined collection rate one year ago for real and personal property was ninety-nine point two-five percent. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina general statutes. It's my recommendation that the board approve the May twenty-two-three collection report as presented.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second. Who seconded? Motion by Commissioner Nunley that we approve the report, second by Mr. Commissioner Smith. Let's vote, please.
While you're voting, I'll also point out that this is your first report of this year that exceeds last year's collection rate, which is not an easy feat to do when you're in the ninety-nine percent range. So kudos to Russell Hill. We'll look forward to next month's report being even better.
Okay, hundred percent.
Thank you.
Pressure, pressure, pressure.
Next report is Mr. Crew.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, Madam Manager. It's good to be with y'all tonight, and tonight I bring you the May twenty-two-three financial report for the General Fund, the Solid Waste Fund, and the EMS Fund. We are eleven months into the fiscal year, or ninety-one point seven percent. For the General Fund, we have collected ninety-one points, ninety-one point zero percent of anticipated revenues, and we have spent eighty-three point three percent of budgeted expenditures. Solid Waste, we have collected one hundred and one point eight percent and spent eighty-five point nine percent. EMS, we have collected eighty-seven point two percent and spent eighty-five point eight percent. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to, to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation for the board to make a motion to approve the monthly financial report as presented.
Motion by Commissioner White?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Higgins. Let's vote. Unanimous, Madam Clerk? Thank you. County Manager?
Just have three items for your manager's report this evening. Your next meeting date's July seventeenth and August seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at six P.M. in this room. Item B is your NACO Annual Conference. The National Association of Counties will hold its conference in Travis County, Texas, July twenty-one to twenty-four, for those who are registered to attend. And then the last thing, I wanted to provide a status update on recycling for this board, although we're not asking for any action tonight, but just to give you a status update, and we'll bring a more detailed report as an action item at a future meeting. As you may recall, February sixth, Jason Thomas made a present, with ECVC, made a presentation to the Board of Commissioners, and he shared some of the financial challenges that ECVC was facing with regard to recycling operations. At that time, this board directed that county staff issue an RFP and bring back recommendations on options for recycling materials for Pitt County. ECVC did not submit a response to that request for proposal, and at this time is not interested in continuing recycling services as a line of their business. On March tenth, following that directive, we did issue, staff issued an RFP for recycling services, and we received four proposals in response. Sunoco Waste Management and Pratt provided bids to haul the recycled materials out of county. RDS provided an alternate bid to purchase the current recycling site from ECVC and operate a recycling facility here in Pitt County. The camp was particularly attractive to the county. This option was because it would put the property back into the tax base, paying taxes. It would keep recycling services here in Pitt County for the convenience of our region. And it would eliminate the cost of hauling out of county. It would also provide an opportunity to employ current ECVC workers who are working at the current recycling facility. RDS currently operates recycling facilities in Virginia, Georgia, and they also collect waste in North Carolina already as well. So discussions on that arrangement are ongoing. I wanted to provide this status report because it's been since March since we issued that RFP, so you'd know where, where we are. Discussions on that arrangement are ongoing. ECVC and RDS have been talking, and that's independent of conversations with the county and your action. And they're developing an understanding on purchase price and terms, and their attorneys are talking with one another. If that moves forward, then staff will come back and bring back to this board options for recycling and a recommendation for this board to enter into a contract with RDS for recycling services here in Pitt County. If that does not materialize, then we'll come back and reconsider those hauling options and present all of those options to the board. ECVC has agreed to continue to process recycled materials through August first at this time. And our current contract with ECVC, you may recall, runs through two thousand twenty-six. So we'll also have to bring back a request to early terminate that contract by mutual consent with ECVC, which will trigger a reversion of the land back to ECVC so that they can sell it to RDS. The land originally belonged to ECVC, you may recall. They transferred it to the county temporarily so that we could apply for and receive grant funding that was available only to public entities so that we could fund equipment for that site. And a contract was in place for them to utilize that equipment and provide recycling services through two thousand twenty-six, at which time it would revert back to ECVC. Given their financial challenges, ECVC is requesting that we look at our other options, and if it's feasible, that we mutually, by consent, terminate that contract, allow the land to revert, and it wasn't ours to begin with. All of this complicates the transaction and has caused the negotiations between their lawyers to take a little extra time. Just wanted to provide, this is a status update, happy to answer any questions that you might have. And if not, we'll bring this back with more detail and options for, at a future meeting, for this board to consider all options and then make a decision as it relates to your current contract with ECVC and a future contract for recycling in the county.
Expressions from the members of the board and concern? Any? Thank you, Madam. Appreciate it.
That's all that I have.
Items for consent. I need a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Higgins?
Second it.
Second by Commissioner White? Am I correct?
One.
Who was it?
But either one.
Okay, Commissioner Ward, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, let's vote, please. Unanimous, Madam Clerk? Now, we are supposed to elect a voting delegate for NACO.
That's-
We didn't do it.
That's on your items for decision.
Okay. So y'all be thinking. The motion passed for consent. Next item. Appointment of County Attorney.
Yes, this is another particularly exciting item this evening. Love the good news items. So as this board is aware, you went through an in-depth application and interview process for your county attorney. And this evening, the board is presented with your candidate for county attorney, Mr. Brian Wardell, who was present, and I would invite a motion by this board.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Brian Wardell as Pitt County Attorney effective August seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at a pay grade eighty-eight, increment thirty-five.
Second.
Second by, motion by Commissioner Nunley, second by Commissioner McLahorn. Any discussions? Thank you so very much, let's vote. We have in the audience tonight to present is our new county attorney by unanimous vote. I think I saw it in all the yeses. Could you please stand? Come to the podium. Do you want to say something? As introduced.
Welcome.
We know you wouldn't be here without her, so.
Thank you, first of all, for your confidence. This is my wife, my lovely wife, Erica. I do have three children, two are bonus children, but they feel like, you know, they came along with the other one. But I want to thank you for taking the time, first of all, to consider my application, taking all the time to come and to talk to me. And particularly want to thank Janice for elaborating on what a great place Pitt County is. I do have people that I know who are actually from Pitt County. I am not, but I feel like I am. And I'm sure that once I actually get here, I'll become much, much more familiar with the great things that Pitt County has to offer. I look forward to a wonderful working relationship, collaborative relationship, getting to know all of you as Commissioners. My colleague, that we certainly will be working closely together. You know, it's not Batman and Robin, it's kind of Batman one, Batman two. Because we sort of have to divvy things up, and I have confidence, and I've heard great things about you. So I just want to thank everyone for having me. I look forward to a long and prosperous relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing your experience to us, Van Dar. Next item on the agenda. Annual Control Services Agreement. Chad Singerton.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. That was everyone.
Everyone.
I'm here before you tonight with the item of decision contractual agreement with the Town of Farmville to provide exclusive animal services for the municipal limits of the Town of Farmville in agreement with compensation for the services rendered. It's mutually agreed upon by both parties that this would be a streamlined service that would be for the betterment of the citizens of the Town of Farmville as well as the citizens of Pitt County. As such, on June the fifth, the Board of Farmville Commissioners adopted a resolution to adopt Pitt County Animal Comprehensive Animal Control Services for the Town of Farmville, should the board agree to the terms. And if there are no questions with that.
Was there any questions? I'd like to give you a chance to discuss. All right, now we have a motion.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Oh, you already made it? Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Nunley, second by, I heard one over here.
Well, I thought I was making a motion, but I seconded.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Commissioner Coulson. Let's vote, please. Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Singerton. We now have quarterly ARPA update. Mr. Rhodes, Tim Corley, Sam Crew, and Jennifer Roman.
Good evening, Madam Chair, again, Board of Commissioners, Madam Manager. Tonight, Jennifer Roman, the Pitt County ARPA Coordinator, will bring you a quarterly ARPA update that provides key dates, review of actions, achievements, and a financial- and a financial updates. Then James Rhodes, Assistant County Manager, Planning Director with Rivers and Associates, and Tim Corley, Assistant County Manager, County Engineer, will bring you presentations and recommendations on recreation improvements, courthouse renovations, and ARPA allocations for the housing and homelessness call center. Now I'll turn it over to Jennifer Roman for her update. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Manager.
You may adjust your mic so you won't have to tiptoe.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Manager and Commissioners. I am back today with the follow-up report of ARPA funds. You will recall the timeline as follow. Pitt County received 35.1 million along with the following breakdown of dates. December 31st, 2024, all ARPA funds must be obligated. December 31st, 2026, all ARPA funds must be spent. ARPA Treasury reports were submitted December, January, and July 2023.
If you could pause there for one second. We don't have it showing on our screens. If public information could get that PowerPoint on our screens as well. Is it out there? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, continue.
Okay, so you will recall the timeline as follow. Pitt County received 35.1 million along with the following breakdown of dates. December 31st, 2024, all ARPA funds must be obligated. December 31st, 2026, all ARPA funds must be spent. ARPA Treasury reports were submitted December, January, and July 2023. Our last quarterly report was in March 2023. And our next quarterly report will be in September 2023. Since our last report, payments were released to our three nonprofit organizations and their ARPA projects have started. 1 million was obligated to the Whitehurst Waterline Extension Program project. 2.6 million was obligated for the Great Grant Program match. Housing and homelessness strategy was also explored. I would also like to highlight that our nonprofit organization, A Time for Science, had their building ground break and will start the construction of their science building. This building will support education, specifically youth education. Additionally, Pitt County's ARPA webpage continues to be updated. I encourage our Pitt County residents to follow along and stay up to date with ARPA projects and how we share our story. These are our seven cost centers. Under the allocation column, the board has allocated 35.1 million. Moving across, we have obligated 10.5 million. Next, we have pending obligations of 14.4 million. The available to obligate column represents remaining ARPA funds that are available to the board to allocate, and this is 10.1 million. Within this quarter, Pitt County has spent 6.6 million of ARPA dollars. This next slide, this is what you see in your pack, board packet. It is a detailed breakdown of the previous slide. This is listing all the specific projects along with the same allocated amounts. We have obligations, pending obligations, pending obligations, available to obligate, amounts, and expenditures. I will now turn it over to James Rhodes.
Thank you, Jen. And just for the board's clarification, to interpret, obligate means we are under contract. We've already signed a contract for those funds and that's what we have to have by December of '24. Everything needs to be in that obligated column. Pending obligation means this board told us we're going to spend it, but we haven't entered into that contract yet. And then obviously, unobligated is what you have left to allocate. Thanks, sorry, James.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Let's get to some exciting things. North of the River Community Center and Recreation Site Master Plan. Again, you might recall, late last year, the board did obligate $10 million to twin community centers, one at Alice F. Keane District Park, one at our office park north of the river. We had not really contemplated having a community center there and having a recreation facility. So in turn, yes, your planning director recommended a plan be established. So tonight, you get to see the final version of that. We've been through a lot of public input, got a lot of good ideas in front of us. So Ben Williams with Rivers and Associates is here to give you your final report and a phase plan of sorts as we have money available to grow this park. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Good evening, everyone. Some of this you've already seen in our previous presentation on the preliminary site plan, but we'll just do a quick recap. The target site there is approximately 25 acres that we scaled down to just a smaller bit of that that you'll see in the final plan. There were some existing conditions out there with overhead utility lines, some drainage canal, and existing parking lots along, adjacent to the existing office building. We have some pictures from the existing conditions out there, the arboretum, some open space. Picture C there shows that overhead utility line. There is some beekeeping, beehives out there, open space, and the drainage canal that runs along the perimeter there in photo F. As Mr. Rhodes said, there was an extensive public input process that we went through. We pushed out information through the county website, informational flyers that were available at numerous county offices. We sent things out through the schools, particularly in that north of the river area. We had held three public meetings. One at the Stokes Elementary School, one at Belvoir Elementary, and then at the Agricultural Center office as well. We, in addition to those three meetings, we had four stakeholder meetings with key groups that we identified in our process. The online survey that we had, we had opened for two months. We had 435 completed. 97 of those, 97% of the respondents were Pitt County residents. We didn't have folks from Iowa getting online somehow or another filling out, giving their opinion. 73% of the respondents were folks that had been living in the county for over a decade. So that was good. They had a, we had a good feeling they had a pulse, a finger on the pulse of what was needed in the area. Top three barriers that folks identified for recreation was they just didn't have enough time, the facilities were too far away, or that facility or program that they were looking for was not offered in the county. 71% of the folks that filled out the survey said that they would use this facility on a weekly or daily basis. And 58%, almost 60% said that they would use that facility between noon and 9:00 PM, so in the latter part of the day. This is just a overview of the stakeholder groups that we identified and included in those four meetings. They included Pitt County Agricultural Center staff, Health Department staff, engineering, DSS folks, people from Emergency Management, Cooperative Extension, ECU Health, Community Schools and Recreation, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Parks and Recreation, Pitt County Economic Development, ECVC. And then we also wanted some industrial folks in there too. So we had Thermo Fisher, since they're a big player in that area, and Pitt County EMS and the sheriff, since they are the neighbor. So the results, these items here were those that were listed in the survey that had over 30% response. So 30% or more folks were looking to have these facilities included on site. They, the outdoor facilities, as you see, were walking and greenway trails, playgrounds, open space, soccer fields, and picnic shelters. Indoor, they wanted space for the teens. A pool, strength and cardiovascular equipment area, and places for fee-based classes, space for senior adult programs, a gym, multipurpose rooms, aerobic fitness rooms, and indoor walking and jogging since, for folks to be able to do that activity in this type of rain they were getting ready to get this evening and the next couple of days. So based on the survey results, we at Rivers and the county staff, we kind of drilled down into what we were thinking could fit on this site, knowing what is already currently offered in the county and what the folks that were filling out those surveys were looking for to have it available to them in that, on that site. So we came up with the outdoor items or the walking trails, playground, open space, a multipurpose field, picnic shelters, and an environmental education area. Indoors, in the community center, looking for gymnasium, classrooms, and activity space, that strength and cardiovascular exercise area, multipurpose rooms, aerobic fitness rooms, and that walking and jogging area. Based on the responses, and again, knowing what is already offered, we were looking for this facility and this park to be something that is unique, multi-generational. So a place for everybody, for every time, every day of the week, to come and be able to do something. So this is what we came up with. And this was presented to you in a preliminary form, but based on your encouraging response and lack of tweaks to it, this is what we came up with and stuck with. Now, as you see, we added some color to it based on phasing. And these phases can be implemented as money becomes available in all different forms, whether it be from grants or just appropriation from tax funds. So what I'll go through here is, this is Phase 1 and Phase 1A. So Phase 1, the big one, is going to be the community center and that associated parking. Now, Phase 1B would be some additional classroom space, a wing there to accommodate some of those other items. So the big piece is the entry and the gymnasium. This wing would be some more classrooms, some multipurpose space, things that can be, you know, they can kind of fluctuate. The addition, another part of Phase 1B would be the closing in front of the existing office there. What we're trying to do is close that off to reduce the current pedestrian and vehicle conflicts. We haven't had any accidents there, but with more use in that area, more traffic going to a multipurpose field or the trails or the picnic shelters, we just don't, if we can eliminate it and avoid any incidents, what we can do here is close that front area off and install a driveway and additional parking to access the existing parking lot back there in the back. The future phases would be some more playground areas there at the community center with an additional picnic shelter. We also have, just up at the top of the screen, in the island area is a, a proposed restroom to give folks some facilities when they are using the area there. The next phase would be a multipurpose field and another picnic shelter there. We would tie into the existing parking lot, not needing additional parking at that particular phase. Then what we're looking to do is have some additional, that's this environmental education area in the existing grown pines there, there would be some selected clearing and limbing up to be able, for security reasons, be able to have a clear sightlines through the property. There's a playground there just at the bottom of that multipurpose field. Again, some picnic shelters in there as well. Finally, we would have some more parking added to. We've got a berm up at the rear of the property to provide some screening and security from the detention center. And then that is the, again, the overall proposed site master plan with its phasing, and they can be combined as funds become available.
Can we talk about?
And with that, Madam Chair and members of the board, we are asking for your endorsement of this plan. We'd like to see it come to fruition, but we kind of need to get a start first and hope, if you've got any input, we're welcome to hear that tonight. But if not, we're asking for your endorsement of this plan. I'd also like to recognize Alice Keane is here, along with Rob Maloney and Jennifer Coward, Lanier Coward, both with Community Schools and Recreation. And they've lent a lot of good support for the development of this plan.
And if I could just add a little different in this presentation tonight than most of your presentations is because it's weighty, we're going to pause at each point to have you make action items as we go through. So this will be a decision point on the plan. You'll have another decision point on construction for these facilities, another decision point for construction of the courthouse, and then another decision point for housing and homelessness. So it's not the end of your presentation, just a resting point to keep you straight as we go through.
Thank you, that helped me. You have a?
Question, who raised?
Who did it? Who did it?
I'm sorry, I have.
Okay, discussion first, yes, madam. Commissioner Hudson.
I didn't, and of course, I'm going to vote in favor of this plan. But I do have a question about the survey. Do you have any numbers on the residents north of the river? How many participated in this survey? You know, we're putting this up and we're hoping that this is what the residents want and they will participate. So did you get any feedback?
We did not actually ask, you know, addresses and that sort of thing. But I can tell you, certainly the people that we saw face to face were predominantly from the north of the river area. We also pushed this out. It was a bilingual survey and we had the schools really involved. Stokes, Belvoir, Bethel, pushing those out to make sure that as many of the households north of the river, those are your schools, elementary schools north of the river, to make sure that they were, those households were reached. I cannot give you a number though, or a percentage, as to how many were north of the river. I would say the vast majority, just off the cuff, but I don't have the numbers to support that.
All right, any more discussion? We have a vote on this, part of this presentation. We need a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Hudson, seconded by?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Smith. Let's vote, please. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Next item in this.
Thank you, y'all have a good evening.
Entourage. Oh, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I'm back to talk a little more about a couple more ARPA projects that we've discussed in the past. First one being in the community health call center, which is these community centers. We're ready to go out to bid on these centers. And tonight, we're going to ask for approval to move forward on them. We're going to bid them concurrently, so they'll both be bid at the same time. And we'll see, see what type of bids we get back. We've, we've kind of constructed the bidding of these projects to have some flexibility as to, as Ben showed in his presentation, Phase 1A and 1B, which is kind of the additional square footage on one side of the facility. That will be bid as an alternate bid, so will give us some flexibility on where the bids come in. Right now, we really don't know where the, where the dollars will be. I suspect, like everything else, they'll probably be up there, but we'll, we'll figure that out once we get those bids. So the first motion tonight would be to move forward with bidding those two projects. We can probably pair that with the courthouse project, which falls under the Employee Health and Safety Call Center within ARPA. I'm going to show you, there is one decision that has to be made on this project, and that is how this project is to be bid. If you recall, when we first brought this to you, we were discussing a sixth courtroom, district courtroom to be built on that map in front of you. The pink area is involved in that construction. You'll see kind of a small courtroom that's in the design there along with some reconfiguration of the office space there, as well as some, I guess, conference rooms within the existing space that the sheriff, sheriff has there. So that would be one project scope. The other would be in the green, which is the magistrate and small claims court area. That would allow them to vacate the building that is, that they are currently in downtown, where the county could utilize that. That was in our space study, if you recall, that JKF Architecture did, to move those folks out of that building. So tonight, along with the community centers, we'd like to move forward with bidding this project as well. The decision you need to make on this project is which one is the base bid and which one is the alternate bid. So that meaning, we're not sure funding-wise if we'll hit the mark on where these projects may be. So we want to give ourselves some flexibility on how we move forward. You may choose to fund them both if the price comes in high. However, we'd like to give ourselves a little more room to work with it if you decide which project is more important to you as a board, whether it's the courtroom, the sixth courtroom, or if it's the magistrate and small claims space there. And we'll bid that project, whichever one you decide is more important as the base bid, and the alternate would be the other.
and the alternate would be the other.
Which would you like?
That is your decision.
All right. In the discussions here, yes, Commissioner White.
I would just like to say, as somebody that's been to the small claims court multiple times, they don't even have a restroom in there. If there's more than five or six people, other people just have to stand outside until, just, you know, whenever. So I would personally like to see that as our base bid just because I think as many people as they have in there, they can definitely use a nicer facility.
That's it? Thank you, Commissioner Coulson.
I was going to say the same thing.
Okay, and Commissioner Nunnely.
So I think both are extremely important. I think we have outgrown our court facilities. I do know that in speaking to a number of district court judges and members of the district attorney's office and seeing the dockets, that we are severe, at a severe, almost crisis level with our courtroom facilities. And then having this sixth courtroom, I think, for the administration of courts to make sure that cases are heard on a regular basis in a timely manner, especially on the backlog. That's what I'm hearing from the bar, that this is of critical importance. So I would be in support, if we have to split it, of prioritizing the adding the additional courthouse, based on feedback that I've gotten from the bar.
All right. Members of the board, we need a vote, a motion, I'm sorry.
I just, I will remind you that this doesn't set in stone the action. So once we get bids back, you can choose to fund them both. We can bid it, we can bid them separately. We're, you know, it's best, I think, to bid them together as one project because certainly someone that's going to come in and do the work will get better pricing if we do the project as a whole. So we still, it just doesn't lock us down to doing one or the other. It just provides a little bit more flexibility for us to move forward with the project. And then obviously, it'll come back to your, to the board for approval of any contractual agreement with the contract.
And if you want to simplify it, your first motion can be to consider approval to bid the recreation and community centers.
Oh, right. First motion to bid the recreation and community center.
If that's the desire of the board to make such a motion.
Yes, it's better for me. I want to keep the motions writing, let's keep it going.
Motion to approve the bid for the recreation and community centers. So both locations.
Okay, we got a choir of seconds. So we have motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Smith. Let's vote. Unanimous, Madam Clerk.
And next you can address your, the bids on the courthouse and the priority, if you have a motion.
Motion to do the courthouse.
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner McLawhorn, second by Commissioner Coulson.
And you need to prioritize your base versus your second, I suppose.
Okay.
Was that your?
Let's get the motion, Mr. McLawhorn.
We have to prioritize which one you want to do first. If we don't have the money to do both, which one would you want to do first on the motion?
Let's hear it, Commissioner McLawhorn. Which one you want to prioritize first?
The courthouse.
The courthouse will be first and then it will be second priority with the?
What we're looking for is whether you want to prioritize the court, the sixth courtroom is more important or?
Number one?
Or the new magistrate, small claims court as?
The courthouse is?
Within, you've approved the community centers, we'll move forward with those. That's, that is just as important as the courthouse project, but within the courthouse project, courthouse project, which do you want to be the base bid and which to be the alternate bid?
Which one is the base bid for the courthouse project? Mr. McLawhorn, your motion?
The base bid.
The base bid? And the second one would be?
For small claims or for sixth courtroom?
Yes, the small claims.
Okay. Did you understand the vote, the motion, members of the board? Okay, the clerk needs to get the correct statement, Mr. McLawhorn, Commissioner McLawhorn, is that the base bid for this project would be the courthouse?
The courtroom. Either the courtroom or the small claims court. Which one is the base bid? The sixth courtroom or the small claims?
So I have motion to prioritize the small claims court as the base bid and the courtroom as the second project bid.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got the motion by Commissioner McLawhorn and second by Commissioner White. Let's vote. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Rose? What are we looking at now with this entourage?
Here's your third part of tonight's discussion about the ARPA quarterly update. You may recall back in March, your previous quarterly update, this was an item, Housing and Homelessness, that staff was directed to go back, get more information, do a review on transitional housing, and bring back additional information. So tonight, here is your new recommendation. You have $4 million, Jennifer mentioned that earlier, within the category that's currently unobligated for housing and homeless projects. So to go back through these quickly, and you've got a, I'll say, a cheat sheet in your package tonight that gives a lot more detail on each one of these activities. Under the homeless housing resources, you've already heard from Community Crossroads Center, that group also submitted as part of the nonprofit review, application review process. It's been consistent, $1 million throughout has been requested for those activities, for the expansion there.
James, just a second, for the board, it's on page 94 that he's referencing, if anybody's looking in your packet.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So Community Crossroads, $1 million. Care transitional housing. You also have that information in your package tonight. Janice and I have had a fair amount of discussion with people associated with the nonprofit that want to provide some of those services to our community. Based off information provided by the nonprofit, we're recommending not the full amount that was requested, but half of that, $250,000. Be glad to discuss further with you on that. Two items within the planning department, and this is, we believe, truly needed in our community right now with the limited amount of housing units available for our population, especially affordable housing. Eviction prevention, if we've got people in affordable housing units, we want to keep them in there. So this eviction prevention program would allow us to help out with some rent, the center ears, utilities, and so forth. As I mentioned, the other part is there's a dire shortage of affordable housing units, temporary hotel sheltering. We've been in that business for quite a while, especially during the pandemic. It's still a need for that, especially with families that we can't get housed quickly enough. This is an alternative. And so those are your four proposals for homelessness. Under your standard housing improved, or substandard housing improvement program, Habitat for Humanity, funding two homes there. We're pretty late in this process. You've seen the deadlines, we've got to expend this money by. We're suggesting moving forward with two of those units, that'd be $300,000. And then housing replacement and other types of rehabilitation programs, $2.2 million, that would be handled through the planning department. That would be funding that we would pretty much add to some of our existing programs. The big benefit here is the replacement money. We do not have any funding agencies that are providing replacement housing right now, so that is a dire need and this helps address that. So with that, Madam Chair, that's the presentation. Welcome any questions that you have about this.
First of all, we'd like to have discussion. Any discussion of the board? Commissioner Coulson?
I'm troubled with the amount of money that's being considered for all these things because we can spend all this money, it'll be momentary, and next year we'll have the same problem. There's so much need out there, I would admit, but this is a drop in the bucket. Who selects the party that receives whatever benefits?
Under homelessness, we have a housing group that meets weekly. We have new clients brought in, it's an elaborate review process, and I will say each one is vetted through that process. So depending on the needs, depending on, you know, someone's handicap, the types of units that would be available, we do that weekly. And I'll go on to the housing.
When we first talked about the ARPA funds, I was hopeful that we would do something, I believe, actually it came from Chris, that we would be investing in long-term things. This is not going to be long-term. This is momentary, this is like paying salaries. And then it's gone, and then we're just going to be right back next year, same problem. I just have?
You finished discussing?
No, I'm troubled with it.
Oh, you are troubled. Well, you?
I will relinquish the floor.
You put a dotted end of that? Now we'll go with Commissioner, I'm going to come right on down the line. Commissioner Huggins?
There is a need, a lot, as you said. And yes, it is temporary, but the need is going to always be there. And we, I feel like that we have to address the immediate need and whether it's temporary and still work on some long-term or permanent. I'm aware of most of this, evictions, temporary, habitat, all of this. We get calls at my church, just had some last week, helping with rental. So I am very much in support of the staff's recommendation on this, the housing and the homelessness.
Commissioner White? Commissioner McLawhorn?
I somewhat concur with Commissioner Huggins. I think this is very neat, we have talked about this a long time and we have somewhat vetted, I think, James Rose and his committee and have done outstanding job on this, so I support this wholeheartedly.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Nunnely?
So first, I think that this is an area where, you know, all of the ARPA considerations, that there've been a lot of stakeholders involved and there've been a lot of people within staff that have really dug deep. And homelessness is a problem that I think everyone in our community really feels strongly about and how to address it, regardless of support or not support of this program in particular. I did, as Commissioner Coulson raised at the beginning of the ARPA, thought that we needed to, as a community, make an investments in long-term, not direct fund, but make, prioritize direct funding of projects that would be around 40 years from now, that would still be standing. And when I look at this proposal, I'm satisfied that there's a good mixture of funds that are being directed toward brick and mortar, that are building infrastructure out in our community that will be around for the future and help provide the structure for provision of services that will continue to be needed, provided in the community because the homelessness problem is not a temporary problem, it'll be a community problem forever. But having those facilities and being able to meet people where they are, that's of critical importance. And so while I agree we need to make investments where they'll be longstanding, I see a lot of this as being directed at direct, direct brick and mortar that's going to help facilitate the provision of those services by community partners that are well-positioned to do so. So I'm in support of it.
Commissioner? Excuse me, Commissioner Holland? No comment. Commissioner Ward?
I'm in support, that's all I can say.
Are we ready for a motion?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Are we going to go with the whole batch?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Wait a minute now. I voted number two.
Did you not, does your vote not record properly?
It was not recorded properly. I voted my number two, it came up, yeah.
Do you need to, if you have a commit?
So that would put it at five to four, I believe. So we can change it for the record, that would place it at five to four.
I voted number two.
It came up.
It came up as two. It came up as two.
I saw something else.
So then it would be five to?
It was six to three.
Six to three.
So is that approved?
Six to three, approved as presented. Motion passes.
Oh, motion pass. Next item?
Yes, ma'am. Farmer's Market Rules of Procedure and Policies, the standard operating procedures. The county's taken, I'll say, a larger role in the management and operation of the farmer's market over the past year since the cooperative extension, the previous cooperative extension director came through and has departed. I did want to recognize a few people in the audience. We do have one of our policy board members, Wilbert Futural, here, also a retired county employee. PJ Andrews and Hannah Smith from Soil and Water, and they've been involved through the whole process in developing this, as well as our market manager, Loretta Johnson, is here. So with that, quite a lot has gone on. This is not a quick knee-jerk reaction, I just want you to know that. We have been laboring over this for well over a year, looking at these policies, reviewing maps, looking at a lot of different things to see how we can make this, it runs good. We want this market to be sustainable and viable for a very long time. PJ and his staff have been very instrumental in making some improvements out there, fiscal improvements. So these operation and management procedures will only help. So what we've done, such as our planning board, Farm and Food Council, Board of Adjustment, we've kind of gone back and reformatted what was bylaws and a constitution into actually rules of procedure and standard operating procedures. Seems to work much better. It divides up what deals with the board itself or committee and what the manager of the market needs to contend with. So this very much aligns with other boards and committees in the county. Rules of procedure, they're standard. You have rules of procedure, it pretty much advises this board how it needs to operate. So one of the things that we wanted to make sure of, we are suggesting a change to the name of this group. It was a policy board. This board is really an advisory committee to you. So we're advising accordingly that that name be changed as part of the rules of procedure, as well as standard operating procedures. Probably what you've heard most about would be these new policies or reinforcement of existing policies that were already in place. Quite a number, I'll just lead you through some of these. We're going to have annually, you've already dealt with the fee structure, one of the best things you've done already as part of your new budget process. We've got a fee structure that vendors play, pay once a year instead of us going around each Saturday collecting money and handling cash. So we feel, thank you for handling that already. But some of the other things that need to be, I'll say, tweaked and improved would be the application package. Annually, the vendors would submit something and, and as part of that, these would be certified vendors. If you're growing crops, we're trying to make sure folks are growing things locally, we're going out to do farm inspections. Already, if you're dealing in baked goods, you have to have a certification from the state. So we're going to make sure all those certifications are intact and that's handled. One of the biggest items that you'll see, and you've already heard some comments about, where would the vendors be certified from? And this is a geographic type of requirement. What our policy committee to date has said, after reviewing maps and other information, What our policy committee to date has said, after reviewing maps and other information, it should be Pitt County and any of those counties that touch on to it. And you can see those that are listed here. And just as importantly, the makeup of the vendors at the market should be a minimum of 70% of growers and those with baked goods. Again, this is a farmer's market. Yes, we accept craft vendors, but we want to hone in on those that are producing, that are growers and are providing baked goods. So with that, those farm inspections, we will be going out to anyone that's verifying that they're a grower. We'll be going out on site to ensure that those crops are being grown on site. So with that, Madam Chair, we do have your recommendation for tonight to adopt both the rules of procedure and these new policies with an effective date of July 1st, 2023. I welcome any questions you might have.
Any discussions from the board? I'm ready for a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner White, that we approve, second by Commissioner Ward. Let's vote. Unanimous, Madam Clerk.
And Madam Chair. I'd be remiss if I didn't invite everyone out. It's been a great growing season. If you haven't been out to the market, we're open Fridays and Saturdays.
Good-looking business.
Nine to one. We even have a donation station to set up through cooperative extension on the last Saturday of each month. So if you feel benevolent, you want to provide some food and other resources, you can see Tanisha up in the top right-hand corner, and she will accept those donations and provide those to folks that are in need. But there's a lot of good things happening at the market. Please come out and see us Friday and Saturdays, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Thank you.
Nice plug, Mr. Probst.
Thank you.
We didn't do any motion, hold on.
He did it already.
Oh, we done it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm picking too much. We now need a vote on our voting delegate in Travis, Texas, for the meeting called National Associations of Keltes.
Attending will be Chairwoman Perkins-Williams, Commissioner Floyd Huggins, Commissioner McLawhorn, Commissioner Holloman, and Commissioner Nunnely.
The members of the board, of the attendees, need to be one of those.
Commissioner McLawhorn.
Commissioner Benji Holloman.
I will second Commissioner McLawhorn's nomination.
The motion by Benji Holloman, second by Commissioner White. Let's vote. It's a unanimous vote. Madam Clerk, it's ordered.
Your next item is a reappointment to the.
Called out before showed up.
Reappointment to the Pitt County Human Relations Council. It's being recommended that you reappoint Mr. Carlton Dawson as an at-large representative, Ms. Chantel Hawkins as your NAACP representative, Chairwoman Mary Perkins-Williams as your Board of Commissioners representative, and Mr. LaChancy Staten, Pitt County Sheriff's Office representative to the Human Relations Commission. All of their terms will expire June 30th, 2026.
I need a motion by Commissioner Nunnely, and second by Commissioner White on the recommendation. Let's vote, please. Commissioner McLawhorn was the one that seconded the motion, Madam Clerk. My mouth is out turned. Next item on the agenda?
Is an appointment to the ECU Health Medical Center Board. It's being recommended that you move to appoint Tony Corey to an unexpired term that will end March 1st, 2027.
Motion. Motion by Commissioner Ward, second by.
Second.
Commissioner Nunnely. Let's vote, please. All right. Madam Manager, what's the next one?
An appointment to the Pitt County Farm and Food Council. It's recommended that you appoint Hillary Gallagher, Matthew Stevens, and Lillian Wiley for the terms set to expire June 26th, 2026.
Motion combined, Commissioner Huggins, second by.
Second.
Commissioner Ward. Let's vote, please. We're on a good road. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Next?
The last one is a motion to reappoint a member of the Board of Commissioners to the Department of Social Services Board. Chairwoman Perkins-Williams currently serves, and that's the county commissioner designee on that board. She's currently served two full terms. So if reappointed, it would be an exception to your rule, or you could appoint an alternate commissioner.
Most of all, Mary.
That would be.
Motion by Commissioner Holloman, second by Commissioner White. Let's vote, please.
You're just figuring it out.
Oh, Madam Clerk, it was unanimous. We will now have our commissioners comment. And I haven't started on this end tonight, so Commissioner Ward, please.
I have no comment. I appreciate all the people who come to our meetings and participate. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Holloman?
No comment.
Commissioner Nunnely?
I'd like to congratulate Councilor Wardell for joining our staff. And I want to thank all of the ARPA staff for all the very hard work you guys have put in, the planning staff and everyone, tax and everything's gone into that. Thank you all.
Commissioner Smith?
No comments.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
I too like to congratulate our county attorney and his family, his wife, to welcome to Greenville, North Carolina, Pitt County.
Commissioner White?
I would also like to welcome our new county attorney.
Commissioner Nunnely, I mean, Huggins, I'm sorry.
Welcome, 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 and thanks to the ARPA staff.
Commissioner Coulson? And we're happy to have you back from your.
Sorry, I couldn't have interviewed you.
At my comments, I'd like to thank all of you for what you're doing with the trash, especially District 2 residents. When I rode around last weekend, I was so pleased. I'd like to commend you on your effort, and I have watched you walk out to the yard and pick up your trash. Continue this effort, because a beautiful place invites development and economics. Thank you so much. I need the motion to adjourn.
No.
Second.
Not a close session, right?
No, it's not on the agenda. We don't have a close session this far. We're going to close the door and go home. Let's vote, please. You know I'm enjoying this meeting. We are now waiting for the last two votes to go home. I hope y'all do. Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. That was unanimous.